Everybody, if anyone needs a chair, we have a couple chairs up front here. There might be some sporadically in the crowds of people that are sitting. If you see someone who needs a chair and you don't need a chair, please give up your seat. We've got all the chairs that we have. We should be able to get started shortly. Still, people checking in. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, townspeople Dalton, welcome to the January 16th, 2025 special town meeting. It looks like the rumor that I'm giving away Super Bowl tickets has gotten out. Sadly, it's not true. Before we begin, I wanted to introduce the people that are sitting at the table here tonight, just in case you don't know them. To my right, we have the select board members, Tom Dubriel, Eric Moore, Jovent Dudley, town legal counsel Nate Madolo, and to my left, the town clerk Jeanette Charn. So our purpose here today is to hear, discuss, and to vote on two warrant articles that were petitioned before the select board on December 9th, 2024. I suspect that every one of us here would prefer to be in front of a wood stove or maybe a TV tonight. So my purpose here as the moderator is to make sure that we follow our process, the state laws, have a fair discussion, vote on the articles, and go home. There are a set of rules that have been posted for this. These are the same rules that are going to be used at the town meeting. They were posted on the town website, the bulletin board, the gymnasium door, and I was asked that I should read just a few of them to make sure that everybody's on the same page as we go forward this evening. So first of all, no one shall speak unless recognized by the moderator. Only one speaker will be recognized at a time. Dalton voters and those who have not spoken on the article will be given preference to speak first. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Will use the microphone that's right here and begin by providing his or her name and their address and town of residence. Hopefully, that's always Dalton unless you're someone else hoping to speak. All speakers are expected to direct their comments to me, the moderator. That's to be courteous and respectful and speak to the issue under discussion, not to other individuals in the room. Conversation between individuals, personal attacks, inappropriate language will not be tolerated. The audience shall maintain decorum so that the speaker may be heard by all. If any person behaves in a disorderly manner or willfully violates procedural rule after notice from the moderator, you only get one notice. You persist in that behavior, you're going to be asked to leave the room. If you have trouble with that, Trooper Newsom's going to help you. All right. So with that, Article 1 of the warrant raises follows. It shall be the policy of the town of Dalton that the select board may not enter into any agreement with Granite State Landfill LLC owned by Casella Waste Systems Incorporated or any subsidiaries or agents of Casella Waste Systems Incorporated unless: One, a committee consisting of the members of the select board, planning board, and conservation commission negotiates and develops the agreement with GSL on behalf of the town. Two, the resulting agreement is approved by the governing body, that's you, the town meeting. The committee will engage legal counsel and experts experienced in such agreements to help it negotiate the best possible deal for the town of Dalton. The final agreement will be voted on by the committee and will require a simple majority to be put forth to the town for vote at town meeting. So the article as presented also includes this background, and I quote: "Background: GSL has indicated that it is interested in negotiating a host community agreement with the town of Dalton and has offered the agreement they want. While it may look fair and generous, it is not. That's not how $7 billion companies play. Only fools would think GSL is offering Dalton the best deal or that they will ever pay out close to what they are advertising under the current terms. Dalton's select board members say they intend to proceed with negotiating the host community agreement on their own without seeking knowledgeable and experienced negotiating advice and legal counsel. GSL has offered $25,000 to fund the town's legal expenses to negotiate the agreement now before it has the necessary permits to proceed. This approach uses that money to ensure Dalton gets the best deal that it can." Do I have a motion to consider this article? And please state your name.
If Kathleen Dalton, from Aitrony Road, Dalton. My question is, is it appropriate at this point to request an amendment to the article that's written?
I think we need to get the motion on the floor before we do that.
Okay.
So does anyone second that motion? Please state your name.
Betsy Nanzali, 340 Ridge Road, Dalton.
Okay. So the motion to consider the article is approved. Will someone representing the petition be presenting this article?
Motion, Mr. Moderator, to restrict comment to Dalton residents only and the town legal.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to restrict the discussion to Dalton town residents and legal, you said?
Yes.
I second that.
I second that.
Okay.
Michael Allen, 436 Front Road.
Okay, is there any discussion on this procedural motion?
I'm sorry, I did not announce my name, my address, channel. Kathryn, 241 Harriman Road, Dalton.
All right, by show of pink cards, this will be to limit the discussion to Dalton town residents and legal counsel. All those in favor? Looks overwhelming to me. All right, it's Dalton town residents and legal counsel only. All right, again, is someone going to be presenting on the article? Looks like we have someone.
Just push that button.
Thank you. I'll present for it. Call 705-111 Simons Road. I would first like to thank everyone for being here tonight. Regardless of how you vote on these issues, it shows your care and concern for the town of Dalton. For too long, Dalton has been divided by pro landfill or anti landfill. Tonight's warrant article vote about the host community agreement does not fall into that category, though. In my opinion, the warrant article is a vote for Casella or a vote for Dalton. For over 30 years now, I've been lucky enough to run, manage, and work with large-scale companies, and I've been a part of countless multimillion-dollar deals with them. I'm no lawyer, but I can assure you I've seen enough of these deals and spent enough time with the lawyers to identify when an agreement is flawed. There are multiple flaws in the proposed agreement that Casella's brought forth. An example of these flaws can be seen with Casella's language around a suspension event, which provides them six different reasons that allow them to stop their payments to the town. Casella also identifies in the agreement that the first payment to be taken out of the $2 million is their own taxes. I know many in town are hoping to see their taxes covered by this agreement. What if Casella halts their payments, or there's not enough left over for all of us after they have deducted their own annual tax bill? The current agreement is written with rosy language to catch our eye and then is backed with legal bite to protect them from possibly ever paying the town anything. Tonight's vote simply asks that we allow more eyes, more perspectives, more thoughts, and more ideas by having more people review and form this agreement in order to develop the best deal possible for the town of Dalton. This proposal is not pro landfill. This proposal is not anti landfill. This proposal is smart business for the town of Dalton. Let's also not forget that once a new agreement is developed, it must be put forth to you, the voters, to approve it. This is not stripping your rights away, as some have claimed. This is an effort to develop the best business deal for Dalton. I'm sure Casella had a broad-based team put their deal together. Why should Dalton not do the same for its counteroffer? I encourage you to vote yes on this warrant article, and I thank you for your time. So applause is not appropriate for anybody speaking this evening, so let's skip that part. At this point, the article is now open for floor debate. Anybody who can hear them speaking, please come and wipe their hands.
Hi, I'm Christina Ennis, 541 Simons Road, Dalton. And in the spirit of full disclosure, I do not live on Forest Lake. Some people here are saying that you should vote no to protect your rights. I think they have it backwards. Don't we have a right to get the best deal and the most money for our town in a host community agreement with Casella? Our select board wants to skip negotiating, take the first offer, leave money on the table, and get the town committed to who knows what sort of future trouble. They are clueless and they don't even want to help, they don't even want help to understand what they're signing. This town meeting is the legislative body in the town, and the select board is elected to carry out our wishes. Our right is to vote for the select board to do what we want, and what we want is for them to have some informed supervision and negotiate to get the best deal for Dalton. To protect your rights, you need to vote yes on this article.
So please feel free to line up behind the speaker. We want to make this go as quickly as possible. If you have something to say.
Cam Kathryn, Harriman Road, Dalton. Okay. It's nice we have the advice of business leaders in the community, however, to insinuate that the townspeople and the select board is not capable of doing the negotiating without the conservation commission and the planning board, which the conservation commission has an interesting chair, I think is wrong. The select board, we voted that man to do the bidding and the work of the town.
Hi, Martha Trudeau, 707 Dalton Road. I just want to comment that the tone of this article, calling some people fools if they don't see it that way, please, next time somebody comes up with an article, please do not talk like that and make somebody, you just don't call people fools. That's wrong.
Christine Ordiness, 509 French Road, Dalton. I have been on the sidelines, kind of involved with what's going on with the whole, because I was moderator at one point, the whole landfill and the host agreement. And I do agree that I think maybe a panel of five Dalton citizens should be part of the negotiations, but I strongly disagree with the conservation commission and the planning board. They could be prejudiced. I would like to see somebody in the community, maybe five, five members, I'm thinking, maybe with some experience in finances, experience in the history of how other companies negotiate host agreements with a little more solid legal background in it, but the conservation commission and the planning board should have no part of this. They have specifically designated duties to the town, and negotiating a financial deal of this magnitude is not in their wheelhouse. And I would like to see people with better financial interests for the good of the town and all that the town can gather from this deal. So I would like to amend this if we could and remove the wording for the conservation commission and the planning board and insert, more specifically, a five-member panel of Dalton residents who are not in any way connected with other aspects of running the town. May I do that?
You certainly can do that. I do think my lawyer. You certainly can do that. One question I would have is, how do we select those people? We would have to, I think, determine that tonight.
Okay. People, interested parties could indicate their interest and at least a general background to the select board. And since they will be working in close quarters with the select board, the select board will determine who's best qualified to help.
Jeanette, do you have some wording that sort of summarizes that, that I could read as a captured amendment? Everybody takes just a second to come up with some language that we can actually vote on. All right, here's an attempt to capture what you're proposing. We would insert the language that says, "Five members of the town of Dalton who do not currently hold any official role and have volunteered to the select board." Period. "The select board chooses who will participate based on business/financial/legal background."
Sounds good, but I would like to specifically remove the conservation and the planning board.
Okay. I mean, those are official roles, but...
No, I would like it documented to remove those two parties.
Okay.
So it would read, "A committee consisting of the members of the select board and five members of the town," da-da-da, what Jay said. And we would remove planning board and conservation commission.
So it's removed. Excuse me, I'm not trying to be difficult, but would it be necessary to say that interested parties should submit a written statement of their qualifications or resume, so to speak, to the planning board?
I think if we're putting it in the hands of the select board to choose, that they can put out a call for that.
Okay.
I have been aware that there is another amendment that people are interested in putting forward. Would the townspeople like to hear all the amendments to this at once? Or do you want to vote on them one at a time?
I did not see it.
Once there's something second, yes.
You got it all, Swan. Fuck you. That's what we all think of you. Not afraid to say it.
No, we don't.
Get up your ass. No, don't make taking a mirror stick up his ass. Yeah. I quit. Fuck it off.
So here's your first warning. You wanted it, right?
Go ahead, tell me. Tell that cocksucker shut that camera off. Fucking nasty.
Your language needs to be appropriate in here.
It will be. Tell her to shut the camera off.
All right. So, the amendment that we're talking about here, I will just summarize in reading the first point here. "A committee consisting of the members of the select board, comma, five members of the town of Dalton who do not currently hold any official role for the town. The select board will choose volunteers to participate based on business background/financial/legal And then, you may not be able to tell it, but planning board and conservation commission are crossed out on that. "This group negotiates and develops the agreement with GSL on behalf of the town." All right?
I'm good with that.
All right. So does anyone, you're moving the motion, does anyone second this motion?
I second.
I'm second.
Vernon O'Neil, 667 Dalton Road, Dalton.
Okay. The motion for the amendment is seconded. We're now going to have discussion on the amendment as it is stated. So anybody that's in line there who was hoping to talk about the original piece, you need to hold up.
Kathryn, Dalton, Aitrony Road, Dalton.
I just wanted to do one additional piece to this amendment, if you would. It would be under section two. I believe in it there is something that says, "approved by the governing body," and I'd like that to be changed to "the legislative body," and then parentheses, "town meeting as defined per RSA 2147."
So as I understand it, that's a clarification.
That's a clarification as to the group that this is to be approving.
All right, so you're moving that, does anyone second that?
I second it. Christina Ennis, 541 Simons Road.
Okay. So moved and seconded, I believe that we'll now take discussion on this ad written with both components of the amendment.
I think with this rewritten amendment that it's fair to the citizens of Dalton, and they will have their opportunity to have a voice in any of the negotiations if they wish to be a part of that group.
Mr. Moderator, members of the select board, fellow citizens. I'm Gordon Jobb, Lippert Treaty, Ridge Road. We're fairly new here. We bought our own here in 2007. But nonetheless, I am concerned citizen of Dalton. I agree with much of what was said in this amendment. I wanted to point out that I don't think the original intent of the warrant article was to say the select board was not capable of doing a good communication and negotiation. I do want to read one line from a newspaper article that was in the Calerdonie Record and today in the Littleton Weekly Record. Quote, "Dalton's select board members say they intend to proceed with negotiating the host community agreement on their own without seeking knowledgeable and experienced negotiating advice, legal counsel." Well, I think there's been pointed out by a couple people already that that's okay, but more is better. We have more need for more people to be on this committee, and so I'm really heartened to see that these amendments have come forward. I just want to throw an example of what I mean by people with more varied and background coming to this negotiation. An example is requiring Casella to post a performance bond. That's a form of insurance. If Casella is unable or unwilling to perform some part of their agreement, let's say a leak in the landfill liner, then the insurance company, the bond company, is on the hook to pay for that, not the town of Dalton. So that's just an example I'd want to point it out. So additional members will bring negotiating skills and backgrounds all to the benefit of the community of Dalton. Thank you.
So just a reminder, right now we are currently doing debate on the amended article, so you can focus it on that so that we can take a vote on accepting the amendment.
Well, I don't know what you told us about it anyway. Michael Ryan, Amerson Road, Dalton. Why would this group petition... Typically, boards are odd numbers just for that reason, so you don't wind up with a tie. The other thing that I would say is, I'm new in town as well, I live up on Cabot Trail, and I understand the next warrant article calls into question the confidence of at least one of the Select Board members. So I would suggest that perhaps we should consider it as only having one Select Board member on the committee as a representative of the Select Board, and then having townspeople who have some expertise with negotiating agreements like this, who have some history or other specialized knowledge. Because with all due respect to the Select Board, I don't believe anybody on the Select Board has any legal background or a real financial background, or is used to negotiating agreements with multi-billion dollar companies. So I would ask to amend that to be one member of the Select Board and six members of the public.
I have Catherine Harriman Road. I have yet another suggestion for an amendment, is that it is a committee of seven Dalton residents. We're not looking, we don't need six or seven financial advisors, one will do, but the regular people in town need to have their say. They need to be able to express what they want, not letting other people decide for us. As far as the selectmen, we are the advisors to the selectmen, so they do not need to be appointed to this committee. Thank you.
My name is Ron Renaud, I'm on Harriman Road, and I think I can say a couple things as I address the question at hand. One is, Mr. Dubreal helped me build my house, and I know him to be an honest and hardworking man, I know John Swan, and I know where he's coming from. I am not for the dump, however, if I was Mr. Ingersson, I would be, and I understand that sentiment, and I understand the difficulty and... in the time that we're all trying to work things out. I'd like to say one more thing, that I'm as small a government guy as anybody in here. However, when, here we are is a good case of when we actually need the government to make a decision, as challenging as it might be. What I know about making decisions like this is we need to have antagonistic forces. If we just have, I'm going to say as an example, a particular part of the government saying, "We want this, we've got to do this, let's go for this," as much as I don't want, you know, to get caught in gridiron, we need to have an antagonistic force pushing this around. My concern is, no, let's do five, no, let's do one, let's have three, like, this is going to be a late, late night, folks. And so my concern is, my hope is, I'm going to vote no on this now, because I don't know who these five people are, I don't know what their qualifications are, how can I send to something, it's like in Congress when they say, "Well, we got to vote and pass it to see what's in it." No. So my hope is that whatever, I don't even know how my vote will end up going here, but that cooler heads prevail, we slow this thing down, if it takes another two weeks, Casella's going to be okay, the board is going to be okay, we're all going to be okay. But jamming through a vote just to get this through and done, I don't think is wise. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Wellington, I live at 43 Ridge Road. I agree with the fellow who just spoke. I don't think Casella has another Town of Dalton in their back pocket that we're competing against. We should take our time and do this right. I think selecting per this amendment, selecting five people that's selected by the Select Board, I think the five people should be selected, or seven, or six, or however many can make a good number, by the town. Furthermore, I would appreciate the input from the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, because they have knowledge that I don't have, after their years of dedicated service, planning the town and preserving the natural environment. So I think they need to have a say in it, and I would like to leave them in there. So, I'm going to vote no on this. All right, let's have a vote.
We have to get there. So, the...
Hi, I've been asked to read a letter that was sent in.
Is it related to...
Yep. By Mildred Thayer, and I don't know her address. Hi, my name is Mildred Thayer, I'm a resident of Dalton since 2001, and a property owner since 1969. I regret that I'm not able to be in attendance at this meeting tonight. I'm submitting this letter to indicate my support for the petition, requesting that the town create a committee consisting of the members of the Select Board, Planning Board, and Conservation Committee to negotiate and develop an agreement with the GSL on behalf of the town, and that the resulting agreement be approved by the governing body at Town Meeting. With all due respect to the knowledge and expertise...
If I could interrupt. I think it's best to hold that one until we're talking about the general discussion, because we're talking about the amendment right now, we've got to stay on track.
Hi, Kathleen Fountain, 8 Rooney Road, Dalton. Just one piece, because somebody had pointed it out, that the number, is it the number? Can we please change the number of people participating that are selected to four, so that the combination is a total of seven?
Okay. So what I'm planning on doing is asking the original petitioner of the amendment to come back up.
Yep.
And we'll see if she is agreeable to changing that to an even number, for the reason that several people have made out here today.
I agree with someone with an odd number of people.
Okay. Is the number that you would put on your amendment four, or is it six?
Four.
Four. Okay. So are there any further, is there any further discussion to changing this amendment?
Paul 70511, Simon's. Just listening to everyone trying to put together a good compromise in my head, my thought to the amendment would be, allow the Select Board to take the applications, select a specific number. If we're looking for four individuals, maybe we allow them to select eight. Those eight appear on the ballot at the Town Meeting, and they're voted on by the public. And that way there, everyone has a say. The four that gain the highest number of votes become part of this committee. That's just a compromise I was trying to think of.
Okay. So we can either deal with that as a change to the current amendment, which would require the original petitioner to agree with it, or we can take that up as a separate amendment after we've discussed this first, the vote was first.
Christina Yordine, it's 509 French Road. My concern with taking that route which makes logical sense is dragging, dragging it out, dragging it on, as a gentleman says, kicking the can down the road for another three months, two and a half months, wherever we're at. I would think that the Select Board, I will hope that the Select Board will have enough of an open mind to select people based on their qualifications, and not their, I'm going to call it, political stance on the landfill issue. This is about the best benefits for the people of Dalton. There are many of us that are elderly, there are some brand new with little kids. Negotiating this agreement benefits everybody. For those of us that'll wind up in the apple orchard at some point, but the young families coming in, this can make a huge, significant quality of life for the people of Dalton. Whether your young family moving in is going to hopefully help just the roads, benefits to children, benefits to elderly...
I think we need to keep it focused on the amendment.
Okay. So I would, I'm putting my faith in you guys, that the Select Board will have the open mindedness to select the best candidates for this. I don't want the people of Dalton to be, again, presented with, "Oh, here we go again, here we go." No. I would like it amended down to the four, right, we already did that.
That's currently...
Five to four. Okay. And leave it that the Select Board selects the candidates based on submitted resumes and work histories, and appropriate background for the importance of negotiating the best deal.
Hi, Carol Shultry, 66 Faraway Road. As we've seen in the past year at the Select Board meetings, it seems that when something is brought up to vote on, there's no discussion. One makes a motion, and one okay's it. And I don't think that's going to work when you pick out people. I think it's fair the other way, have people vote on it. I mean, we've seen a number of times at the board meetings that Tom will make a motion, Eric will second it, they vote on it, they don't even have a discussion. So I think this is why we're here, to...
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Connie Russell, Dalton Hampshire, 7 Wallace Road. If you look around you, you've got half the town here. Is there anyone here who can, four individuals here who can actually step up to the plate and say, "I'll do that." Seriously, for this amendment?
Hi, Black Haskins, 17 Haskins Lane, Dalton. I just found it astonishing that we're here talking about this article, and to have the selectmen have a say to that. And our second item here is the competency of the selectmen. Why are we not addressing elephant in the room here? How can these people be considered competent to decide on this matter, if there's an article saying they're incompetent to run our town? You have two-thirds of the Select Board, who are obviously always on the Casella side of things. I urge anybody in here, if you can't make it to the selectmen team, start watching the Tony Show on YouTube.
Margaret Trudeau, 707 Dalton Road. It just seems like, isn't it only about a month and a half till Town Meeting? Is that true?
Almost two months.
How many?
Almost two. March 11.
So it just seems like it's going to take about that long anyway for people to submit resumes to the Select Board, and then have them ready for Town Meeting. So I don't think anything's going to go faster by not having a Town Meeting vote. It's just going to end up about the same timing, in my opinion.
Something new?
Yes, I think so. We'll find out. I'm upstate New York, and Walmart came into my hometown...
Does this have to do explicitly with the amendment?
Yes, explicitly, yes.
All right.
So my concern is, everyone's like, "Oh, Walmart's going to come in, they're going to pave our road and put a new light in." And like an abused spouse, or an abused something, we're like so happy they're just, they're going to be nice to us, and then what happens is, the whole neighborhood ends up going down, and then the drive, all the new infrastructure isn't cared for after. My concern is, we're going to vote for the known four people, it doesn't matter, we don't need resumes, we don't need them, we just need to, it's like, this is like an abused woman running back to her husband because he said he'd be nice. To me, it's like, slow this down, I don't know if it's February 11, I don't know when this is. And so, I don't want the dump, but for me, in some ways, it might be a foregone conclusion. At least, let's do the right thing. If Walmart, Casella's coming in, let's do everything we can to slow this thing down, and not vote for four people, three people, 20 people, unless we have the time to look at who they are, look at their character, look at their track record, and help them help these folks up here. Thank you.
Something on the amendment?
Hi, Christina NS 541, Simon's Road. I'm not sure the words that I'm supposed to use, but can I move, or can I motion to take a vote on this amendment?
If you wanted the mic, we'd be doing that right now.
Yes.
I can see that. All right.
I have a petition to... John Lyons, 405 Dalton Road, Dalton. I put a suggestion forth that all the townspeople in Dalton are part of this committee. No, exactly, majority rules, and it's everybody in Dalton is going to be affected by it. So everybody in Dalton should have a voice in. You know, not just one people, one sorts of people, it should be the whole town, let the whole town votes on the amendments and everything.
If you want to make a motion, that's great, but I don't think you're going to get the petitioner to change her amendment to say that.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm a suggestion, I'm not making a motion, I'm...
We need to move on to a vote.
Yeah, that everybody, everybody has a say in the amendment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, is this on the, this is evidently on the entire vote, not on the amendment? So we are right now, we're voting on the amendment?
Okay. My mistake, I will hear you after.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to do this by a show of cards. The question is, do we amend Article One to read as follows? I'll read the entire thing except for the background. It shall be the policy of the Town of Dalton that the Select Board may not enter into any agreement with Granite State Landfill LLC owned by Casella Waste Systems or any subsidiaries or agents of Casella Waste Systems, unless, one, a committee consisting of the members of the Select Board, or members of the Town of Dalton who do not currently hold any official role for the town, period. The Select Board will choose volunteers to participate based on business background, financial/legal background. This group negotiates and develops...
It's not fair for others to decide what they think is right for a majority of people. That is my suggestion for change. Resume, that's it.
Something new?
Yes, I think so. We'll find out. Um, I'm upstate New York and Walmart came into my hometown.
Does this have to do explicitly with the amendment?
Explicitly, yes.
All right.
So my, my concern is everyone's like, oh, Walmart's gonna come in, they're gonna pave our road and put a new light in. And like an abused spouse or an abused something, we're like so happy they just, they're gonna be nice to us. And then what happens is the whole neighborhood ends up going down and then the drive, all the new infrastructure isn't cared for after. My concern is we're gonna vote for the known four people. It doesn't matter, we don't need resumes, we don't need them, we just need to, it's like, this is like an abused woman running back to her husband because he said he'd be nice. To me, it's like, slow this down, I don't know if it's February 11th, I don't know when this is. And so, I don't want the dump. But for me, in some ways, it might be a foregone conclusion. At least let's do the right thing. If Walmart, Casella's coming in, let's do everything we can to slow this thing down and not vote for four people, three people, 20 people, unless we have the time to look at who they are, look at their character, look at their track record, and help them help these folks up here. Thank you.
Something on the amendment?
Yes, hi, Christina NS, 541 Simon's Road. Um, I, I'm not sure the words that I'm supposed to use, but can I move, or can I motion to take a vote on this amendment?
If you wanted the mic, we'd be doing that right now.
Yes.
I can see that. All right. Okay. It's not an amendment, it's a, it's a motion.
John Lyons, 405 Dalton Road, Dalton. I put a suggestion forth that all the townspeople in Dalton are part of this committee. No, exactly, majority rules. And it's everybody in Dalton is gonna be affected by it. So everybody in Dalton should have a voice in. You know, not just one people, one sorts of people. It should be the whole town, let the whole town votes on the amendments and everything.
If you wanna make a motion, that's great, but I don't think you're gonna get the petitioner to change her amendment to say that.
A suggestion, I'm not making a motion.
We need to move on to a vote.
Yeah, that everybody, everybody has a say in the, in the amendment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So is this on the, this is evidently on the entire vote, not on the amendment? So we are right now, we're voting on the amendment?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna do this by a show of cards. The question is, do we amend Article 1 to read as follows? I'll read the entire thing except for the background. It shall be the policy of the Town of Dalton that the Select Board may not enter into any agreement with Granite State Landfill LLC owned by Casella Way Systems or any subsidiaries or agents of Casella Way Systems, unless, one, a committee consisting of the members of the Select Board or members of the Town of Dalton who do not currently hold any official role for the town, period. The Select Board will choose volunteers to participate based on business back, background, financial slash legal background. This group negotiates and develops the agreement with GSL on behalf of the town. The resulting agreement is approved by the legislative body, town meeting. The committee will engage legal counsel and experts experienced in such agreements to help it negotiate the best possible deal for the Town of Dalton. The final agreement will be voted on by the committee and will require a simple majority to be put forth to the town for vote at town meeting. All those in favor of, of this amendment to Article 1 as written, please. All right, so now is the time that we have this new version of the amendment on the floor. If there is anybody who has further discussion about the full amendment, I know there were some people that I cut off because they weren't talking about the amended wording. Uh, if you would like to come forward now and speak, this is your time.
Me again, Betsy Manzelli, 340 Ridge Road. Reading Mildred N. Thayer's letter. Now I don't have my glasses, so. Uh, my name is Mildred Thayer, a resident of Dalton since 2001, 2001, property owner since 1969. I regret that I'm not able to be in attendance at this meeting tonight. I'm submitting this letter to indicate my support for petition requesting the Town create a committee consisting of the members of the Select Board, Planning Board, Conservation Committee to negotiate and develop the agreement with GSL on behalf of the town and with that resulting agreement be approved by the governing body at town meeting. With all due respect to the knowledge and expertise of our Select Board members, the Town should seek experience negotiating and legal counsel for this very important issue. Residents of Dalton should be in control of every aspect in developing the host community agreement, not GSL. More importantly, we should not enter into an agreement at all to allow landfill in our town and in such close proximity to Forest Lake. As noted in remarks made October 29th, 2024 by, by our newly elected Governor Kelly Ayotte, quote, "It makes no sense. This is a beautiful state park, people love this place. It represents the beauty of New Hampshire and this justifies common sense. We cannot let that happen," end quote. GSL would cover 147 acres of water.
That's going pretty far afield from what we're talking about today.
Okay. I'm not legal anymore.
Michael Ryan, Martin Meadow Pond Road. Why would this group petition this meeting? This meeting has been held to stop progress and to keep kicking the can down the road like they have been doing for the last six years. Just think of what benefits we have lost out on in the last six years. This small group who brought this petition forward wants to stop the negotiations between Casella and Dalton and they want to create wasteful spending like this meeting. Dalton does not want high taxes and more spending. There was a meeting back in July with Casella about the host community agreement. Since then, I feel like the Select Board has been making significant progress. The Select Board talked to Casella about lots of things, including covering the cost of legal fees so that negotiation doesn't cost the Town a dime. Casella does not have to offer the Town anything at all, but they are trying to work with us, the Town. The Town has received a good offer of over $2 million a year beyond taxes for 18 years. This would pay our debts, bills, and help to stop raising taxes on people with fixed incomes that have been living in Dalton for generations.
Again, sir, this is about whether we should have a committee doing this. If you can keep your comments on that, I'd have her on for the same reason.
This has no, there is no law in New Hampshire that says Casella has to offer these host communities benefits. The Town should be negotiating, bringing in other boards and the known activist who is 100% against the landfill to negotiate on behalf of the Town is a deal breaker. These people know it and that's what they want. They want to run, ruin the possibility of the Town negotiating with Casella.
Sir.
The Town voted down zoning for a reason. The Town voted Tom in for a reason.
Sir.
The Town voted Eric in for a reason.
Excuse me, sir, we've already moved to an amendment that is different than what you're talking about.
To do their job. This meeting is nothing more than a New York scam and I'm voting no.
Hi, Christina NS, 541 Simon's Road. Um, I would like to make an amendment to this amendment to add that the Town will vote at town meeting for four members who have submitted an application to be part of this.
Okay, so moved, does anyone second this? The amendment is seconded, uh, it's being written up. I think you all know what it's going to say. If there is any discussion of that, please bring it on now. Looks like there's gonna be no discussion. As soon as we can put it on the board and I can, on the wall and I can read it to you all, we'll vote on it. Again, it's gonna be a vote by pink card, so start delivering up that arm.
Ruth Duvo, Duvo, Dalton. Um, that was just really very confusing. I think what needs to be said is that all of, that we're gonna vote on all of the applicants. Correct, not just four, because there's only four applicants that are gonna be chosen. So we need to vote on all applicants that apply.
We'll come up with something here and we'll make sure it represents what she wants and.
I'd like to ask if those who chose to, or asked to amend this article have a realistic way of vetting those who apply so that we don't end up with 50 names on the ballot in March? Because we'll be here for two days counting, if that's the case.
I guess I don't have a suggestion on that, mainly because I was thinking that it's gonna be hard to even get those four. But I could be wrong and we could have the whole town.
Like Chris said, maybe two, but let's be hopeful. Christine Ordina, slide 09, French Road. I originated the change. I would request to require proof of a background in business negotiations or finance or municipal negotiations or somebody who runs a business that has negotiated contracts, somebody. And I don't know the backgrounds of everybody in town, I only know a few. I recognize the, in past, the very difficult problem of getting people, anybody in town, just to run for office, whether it's a trustee of the trust funds or the library or moderator. I know that one. It can be difficult, but again, this is, this isn't a task for the Town. This is a task to make significant improvement. So I would guess, um, I would say some kind of a legal business negotiating background. It could be, um, someone who negotiates teacher contracts, but somebody who knows the ins and outs of negotiation. And there certainly, I am sure, is a plethora of background information on the web, on points, alien points, somebody, um, even if it's somebody with a, a solid grasp of what's going on who can read contracts of like with other companies, with other towns, and just glean the best out of it. I did read the entire contract with commentary, so there's a lot in there that was missing from, but was presented to the Board back in July. There's a lot to it, but as somebody who's, who can understand negotiations, how do you weed that out? You have to have, okay, you have to interview them.
Okay, thank you.
Hatton Fountain, 8 Rooney Road, Dalton. Um, in regards to all of this, uh, I think everybody is wondering so that you don't have a huge list on the ballot. Um, proposing maybe an event where people will put forth whether, you know, their information to everybody, so they know. I don't know, I'm just trying to come up with a quicker, easier way to make that a smaller group that goes on, like you have with the primary and all that. Okay?
In the event that we don't get four people who are willing to serve, I suggest that we, Eric Nielsen, 399 Harriman Road, that the original article be reinstated without the amendment.
Mark Rodd, Harriman Road. And as distasteful as the, the unamended proposal is, my concern is, as earnest as the lady who offered the amendments is, we can feel how amorphous it is in even trying to figure, well, they're gonna be qualified, they've gotta know this, well, they've gotta at least have this. And to me, there's no way that we're going to pick four people who, as I said before, have gotta have an antagonistic view to these good people who are doing what they're doing so we can fight and argue and go for what I would say is truth, a common, a common goal, which is if the dump is a foregone conclusion, we've gotta get the very, very best deal for Dalton and hoping to get the four that might ju, I mean, I'd love to do it. Am I qualified? Who the heck knows? What if I win? I'm probably not good for us. So this is not the best move going. I'd like to see if this doesn't, uh, if we don't have a very concrete way to vet these people, which I don't think we can do under the pressure that tonight, then I'd rather see the first one get voted on, the first initial proposal. Thank you.
Yep, I think it's.
Nick Zbiet, 757 Dalton Road. My concern is just what if there's not four people, then what do we do?
Okay.
Joe Warzek, 318 Mounton Road. Congratulations, you've made things more complex. You kicked the can down the road further. The original amendment made sense. We had people in place to negotiate an agreement. The Town would still vote on whatever was agreed. Now, you kick the can down the road.
Okay. So seeing further, no further discussion by?
I'm sorry, this is very quick. Wendy Roberts, yeah. I just wanna point out that given the number of people that are in this room and have expressed a concern, is it really a concern that we won't come up with four people?
No.
I, I mean, honestly, folks, look at everybody here. Everybody's here because they're so concerned about this. I, I don't honestly believe that, I don't think anybody can realistically say there will be four people who step up to the plate.
Okay. So you, you are the petitioner for this. The change to this would be, the resident, give me resident candidates, not residential? The resident candidates will appear on the ballot at town meeting and will be voted on at town election on March 11th, 2025. All those in favor of that amendment to Article 1, please raise your pink cards and keep them held high. Versus the 204 people that are in the room, we had counted 113, so that motion carries. So it's been pointed out by legal counsel that there is now a conflict in the article as written.
So I was pointing out to the moderator that now there seems to be a conflict, right? Because the original amendment was saying we're going to have the Select Board appoint members of this committee and now we would like to have residents vote members of the committee on at the next annual meeting. So if that's the intention, intention of the most recent amendment, I can't do it, but somebody should make an amendment to remove that sentence that says they will be appointed by the Select Board.
Does that make sense? Wendy Roberts makes that motion. Anybody second that motion?
I'll second it.
Your name is?
Charlie Mae Johnson.
Thank you.
For Dalton Road.
Any discussion on this? I mean, it's, shouldn't be, right? So hopefully, everybody who just held up their pink card is gonna hold up their pink card again, uh, 'cause it's the same thing, I think, but you're obviously free to vote however you want. All those in, I'm sorry. It's hard making sausage in public. All right, so, uh, the Wendy Roberts version of this, number one, now states, "A committee consisting of the members of the Select Board along with four members of the Town of Dalton who do not currently hold any official role for the Town. Uh, this group negotiates and develops the agreement with GSL on behalf of the Town. The resident, resident candidates will appear on the ballot at town meeting and will be voted for at town election on March 11th, 2025."
Sorry, will consist of?
Four.
How many are we gonna vote on?
As many as run.
As many as apply.
Okay, all right. That's not clear, that's, that's my only point.
Only four members of the town.
Only four people will be elected.
Instead of members, should I say residents?
I would say residents.
I know it's coming.
All right, reading it once, one more time. "A committee, a committee will consist of the members of the select board along with only four residents of the town of Dalton who do not currently hold any official role for the town. This group negotiates and develops the agreement with GSL on behalf of the town. The resident candidates will appear on the ballot at town meeting and will be voted for at town election on March 11th, 2025." All right, all those in favor, please hold up. We have, I believe, the final version of this article. Seeing no further discussion? So if I understood correctly, some people wanted this to be a secret ballot. If that's true, need to hear from me, hear from me now. Rescinding, so we want to do this as a? I have nothing.
Mr. Moderator Kathleen Fountain, 8 Rooney Road, Dalton. I move that we have it as a secret ballot, so that the residents' right to vote is, you know, kept the way they would wish.
And I need to have five people?
Five people signing that document?
Okay. You present that.
Mark Haskins, 17 Haskins, Langs Dalton.
You can just hand it over. All those people here? Okay. So five voters present here tonight have requested that the vote on Article One be taken by secret written ballot in accordance with state law. So please now form a line at the supervisors and checklist table, and you will receive a colored card. And we're going to try and do some traffic facilitation to a lot of people in the room. When you get this card, you need to tear the card, and the card will have yes and no for it, there's a perforated line down the middle. You'll tear the card into two, you'll deposit the side, the cards are closed.
Hey Kyle, how you doing?
Need a micrometer to just measure the stacks, let you know. With a micrometer, you can measure the stacks, so you know which is the thickest one, you wouldn't have to count it.
That's too big. Why you just carry 28?
I have one at home.
Yeah. Turned 40?
Really, yeah?
I gotta run it to the wheel. I sprained one of the other wheels, worshiped it for a while. Oh, well, yep. I'm here with that. Yeah, we're keeping all the trucks like that, and get it for money. It's a thousand years, thousand years, you know? It's worth, it's better than making a payment. I drove it down to my son's van, too. Of course, he's got money, he's got a brand new truck.
Yeah, I like to call them best.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's that? You'll have three trucks, yeah. It was a farm, through town, right? It's kind of cold out here. Have to point at your car. You're set to look behind you when you walk in on 412. Those snowbanks, I don't, I don't like to walk the road that much more. Actually, you know, what I've done in my property is I've cut paths, you know? Let's walk the road. He's a good dude, man. He's done a lot of work. Oh, really? Yeah. Can't believe Martin out there, he's doing it. He's a good, you can't, you know? He does, he did some bodywork on my truck. I tell you what, he's good. He can weld, he's good. He does, he's honest, he's good.
Ladies and gentlemen, the result of the vote on Article Number One, the yes votes were 145, the no votes were 49. Article One carries. So I know we'd all like to get out of here as quickly as possible, so moving on. The Article Two, and the warrant reads as follows, "To see if the town will vote to inform Selectman Tom Dubriel that the town has lost confidence in his ability to perform in his role as Dalton's selectman for reasons regarding some or all of the following. Selectman Tom Dubriel is routinely and prepared to comprehend, discuss, or vote on the town's business at select board meetings. When Selectman Tom Dubriel has accepted responsibility to follow up or take action on town business, Dubriel routinely fails to deliver a result. Selectman Tom Dubriel risks significant legal expenses to the town by refusing to respond and/or delaying response to legal right-to-know requests. Selectman Tom Dubriel routinely abstains from voting on motions before the select board. Selectman Tom Dubriel championed the replacement of the town's legal firm with a new legal firm that quickly exceeded, exceeded town's annual budget for legal expenses addressing his issues." Do I have a motion to consider this article?
I have a motion. Find Russell Dalton from New Hampshire, 12th Road.
And is that motion seconded by anyone?
Second. Ariana, Shan, Dalton.
Okay, the motion to consider the article is approved. Will someone be representing the petition, or someone representing the petition be presenting on the article?
I will.
Hello, I'm Amanda Devino. Can you push the button? Hello, Mandy Devino, 511 Simons Road in Dalton. Thank you all for coming out tonight for the special town meeting. I'm speaking to the vote of no confidence on Mr. Dubriel. It has become necessary to confront the violations that have occurred in his tenure as a select board member. The ethical behavior of all public officials is of significant concern to us taxpayers. Elected officials act on behalf of us, their constituents, and should have a good understanding of state laws, avoid conflicts of interest, properly use authority, treat people fairly, follow through with assignments, and be trustworthy. It should be obvious that if one decides to campaign, become elected, and then serve as a select board member, that they have some previous experience, or will quickly gain that knowledge and skills necessary to fulfill the position. I do not expect anyone to know everything, as there is always a learning curve. I do, however, expect them to have the ability to come prepared to a meeting and discuss town business. On too many occasions, Mr. Dubriel has not had his notes available at a meeting or claims he did not receive the information for the meeting beforehand, even though the other board members did. Training is supplied for all Dalton's select board members at the cost of the town through the New Hampshire Municipal Association. This is money well spent to help support the newly-elected select board member. The newly-elected select board member learns about the right-to-know law, RSA Chapter 91A. The purpose of this chapter is to ensure both the greatest possible public access to the actions, discussions, and records of all public bodies, and their accountability to the people. Denying or delaying access to public information is a violation and could harm the town in legal actions and erodes the trust of the public. We as taxpayers could be flipping the bill for a select board member's ignorance of RSA 91A. Mr. Dubriel has denied and/or delayed requests to his constituents on several occasions, myself being one of them. This should be a red flag to every Dalton resident. It is our right to have access to this information, to stay properly informed about our town government. RSA 91A also covers public meetings. Taking a meeting into non-public for the discussion of public topics takes away our rights. It is unethical and in violation of the law, which puts the town at risk again for legal action. Mr. Dubriel followed through with a motion to discuss the hiring of a new town legal counsel in a non-public session, even though it was brought to his attention that this was a violation. As a result, the public was not privy to any discussion or information until the meeting minutes were unsealed. His reasoning for changing legal firms was unsubstantial and lacked reasoning. The public never had a chance to ask questions, as you will hear from the other residents. This decision is costing us taxpayers dearly. Select board members maintain access to New Hampshire Municipal Association, or NHMA, which the town taxpayers pay for. Select board members can contact them for questions, and not utilizing the service is a waste of money. NHMA also publishes a book, Knowing the Territory, which is provided to each board member. Many questions can be answered by reading the book, contacting NHMA, asking more tenured members or employees for guidance before seeking expensive legal counsel. Unfortunately, Mr. Dubriel has sought out guidance first through legal counsel more often than not, and has cost the taxpayers money on questions that could have been answered by NHMA or other resources available to him. Mr. Dubriel also volunteered to collect data for the transfer station in January of 2024. These numbers are crucial in understanding profit-loss from the transfer station. As the year went on, in meeting minutes, you can see where he failed to deliver the necessary information. Selectboard member Joe Beth Dudley was able to collect the date, the data within a few days. Why was Mr. Dubriel not able to accomplish his task in 10 months? Understanding how meeting minutes work is part of the responsibilities of board members. Mr. Dubriel has been on the select board for almost two years and still does not have a good comprehension of how meeting minutes work. At the November 21st, 2024 working meeting, neither he or selectboard member Mr. Moore understood that accepting meeting minutes is accepting what was discussed and not agreeing with the topics discussed. Then, by not approving the minutes, calling for the non-public to be sealed, the minutes were accessible and read by the public. When lean, when town folks knew of the contents, they were upset when told the minutes were never sealed because they refused to sign the meeting minutes. How many times has he abstained from meeting minutes because of this thinking? Or was it due to a conflict of interest? We never know because we never get a reason for it. Abstaining from approving meeting minutes is not a violation, but it would be helpful to understand why our elected official abstains from several meeting minutes between March and October until it was brought to his attention. He has created a hostile working environment in which he has been notified. If this behavior is allowed to continue, he once again puts the town at risk for illegal action. The town of Dalton has attracted the attention of the New Hampshire Right-to-Know organizations. They have been reviewing meeting minutes and videos and have identified several red flags, again, that could lead to legal challenges for the town. Please understand that these issues need to be addressed, or the town and the taxpayers will be the ones to pay for his mistakes. A yes vote sends a message that we are not going to continue to allow our rights to be infringed upon by an elected official. Thank you for your time.
This article is now open for floor debate.
Christina Ennis, 541 Simons Road. I'm here to speak on two things. The alarming number of hours our select board has at the request of Tom Dubriel consulted legal counsel, and about Tom's lack of response to right-to-know requests. As of yesterday, our town has been invoiced for almost $17,000 in legal fees for 2024, and it is estimated there will be another $10,000 worth of invoices through December for a total of $26,000 for the year. As a comparison, our legal fees in 2023 totaled $8,700. We're looking at almost a $20,000 increase, of which a significant amount came from Tom insisting on consulting legal when calling New Hampshire Municipal Association or just looking up RSA's could have answered his questions. Over $1,800 were spent on legal fees regarding right-to-know requests, of which I submitted two. The first was about the August 6 meeting, that Joe Beth had warned the select board was illegally posted as a non-public meeting and should be canceled. Tom and Eric posted it anyhow, and just 45 minutes before the posted meeting was to occur, Tom took down the meeting post without putting up a notice that the meeting was canceled, thus leaving over 30 residents of Dalton waiting at the municipal building. On August 7, I submitted a right-to-know request to the select board, asking for all correspondence about that meeting, and there was no response from Mr. Dubriel. The same meeting was again posted, this time as a public meeting scheduled on August 19, and then canceled, and again on August 21. As many people had rearranged their schedule a second and then a third time, I was curious as to why these last-minute cancellations were occurring, and I submitted a right-to-know request asking for all correspondence between the select board members at this meet, at these meetings, or about these meetings. Again, no response from Tom. On November 1, after the select board had been put on notice and threatened with a possible lawsuit by another town member for lack of response, I finally got a response from Tom that I deem insufficient. Fearing that Tom will again send it to legal, I decided to spare the town additional fees, and so I'm no longer pursuing the answers. Although Tom should be well aware of RSA 91A1 and his obligation to answer right-to-know requests, he surprisingly has consulted the town's legal team for about five requests since July, and incurred at least $1,817 in expenses to the town for eight hours of a lawyer's time. Not only has Tom put the town at risk for lawsuits by not answering simple right-to-know requests, but has unnecessarily spent town funds consulting about a perfectly clear law. In addition, not once, not twice.
Are you about to?
I am. Not once, not twice, but three times, Tom stated in select board meetings that my right-to-know request constituted harassment. I have a funny feeling our town's legal counsel didn't agree with him, and I know that our state... I have a funny feeling our town's legal counsel didn't agree with him, and I know that our state laws don't.
Pam Catherine Harriman Road. This is a waste of money by having this special town meeting to just humiliate and rate a select man. If you really don't want him in there, then if he runs again, don't vote for him. Otherwise, this is a waste of our time and our money. And who's to say what exactly did get done with those right-to-knows? If someone shoots as much information as they have, that's all they can do. Why try squeezing more blood for morale?
We're not, not doing applause on anything tonight. Anybody else have anything to say? Again, so we can wrap this up as quickly as possible. If other people are planning on saying things, please queue in line.
Gordon Jelk, 13 Rizgulik. As I said earlier, my concern is citizen of Dalton. And concern over the actions and lack of leadership of Mr. Dubriel. I'm quoting from Town of Dalton Board of Selectmen's Rules and Procedures dated June 2019. Specifically, Section 4 entitled Conduct with Other Selectmen, the Public, and Staff. Subsection B. 2. Selectmen will treat all staff as professionals. Mr. Dubriel has violated that rule, as evidenced by a town clerk advising the select board of Mr. Dubriel's creating a hostile work environment through his dealings with the town clerk. The specifics of which should not be discussed in the Hilton Forum. Additionally, Section 4(c)(5) requires select board members to treat with respect the rights of all members. Mr. Dubriel has violated this procedure by making comments at public board meetings in which he belittled and ridiculed another board member. For these offenses, and for the good of Dalton, a vote of no confidence is warranted by Mr. Dubriel's actions. Thank you.
Mandy Devano, 511 Simons Road. I just wanted to answer Pam's question about what was used with the right-to-knows. I was able to gather information and ask questions in regards to the $25,000 legal fees that Casella was offering to pay. I thought that my questions were reasonable, asking for prorated payment for any expenses that had been occurred before this agreement was signed. And I don't think it was out of the question to ask for that information, and it was withheld from me for several weeks.
Roden Keela, 40 Simons Road. I am floored to see these ridiculous accusations against selectman Tom Dubriel. There is nothing but baseless cheap shots at a public servant. The warrant claims that Tom Dubriel is not ready to comprehend subject said meetings, and I have even seen attacks on Tom being called names like moron and slob. This is no place in town politics. Tom has openly stated that he has dyslexia. I myself have the same disability, and I am disgusted at the attack on his disability and the statement that he is not ready to comprehend subject matter. That the things that dyslexia is that it makes you slow down, take more time to think about before you react, and before you, to make sure you understand what you're talking about before you sign anything or say anything. That is a problem with dyslexia, but it makes you think. My, I, I am a resident of Dalton. I submitted an R, a right-to-know request on July 30th, 2023, for two items. I still have not gotten these documents to date. I have not gotten them. So if you want to talk about right-to-knows, there's one there, and I have another one, too, that I haven't gotten back in 2023, too. And I, I guess you're not supposed to say names as to who was on the chair and who they went to. My right-to-know was ignored, but the response from the selectmen, one of them, was, I can go blank myself. And that was right on the select board meeting. My point in this is what I have witnessed from Tom Dubriel is not refusal to respond or fulfill the right-to-knows, as previous selectmen have done. Tom took his time and it takes his time before he reacts to make sure he's doing it legal and there won't be any court case. And I have seen complaints against Tom. I've heard them, and I also know everybody's saying that he's causing the town legal. But actually, so is the planning board, from what I hear, and I even heard it in the selectman's office. So if we're gonna throw stones, we're gonna throw mud. We're gonna throw it at all the different offices here. And as far as I'm concerned, Tom Dubriel is doing everything that we expected of a selectman. So, in my opinion, let's not throw mud if we have mud that could be thrown at you, too.
Jennifer Green, 32 Big Hill Road, Dalton. So I just wanted to speak to the meeting minutes. I have attended more than half of the select board meetings in the town. And then the ones that I don't attend because of work, I look for the meeting minutes in order to review them, or, and if those aren't available, I watch the videos that are posted, so that I can review them myself. And regularly, Tom does not approve the meeting minutes, and often, those meeting minutes have to be posted as drafts, so they're not official. But you can review them as a draft. The, the reason that meeting minutes are so important is it's a record of what's happening within the town. And they need to be available to townspeople to review, especially if you can't make it to those meetings. And I have asked Tom multiple times why he is not approving or signing these meeting minutes. And the response that I get on two occasions where they're not accurate. And when I receive that response, I ask for him to please detail the inaccuracies, because there's a lot of innuendos around things not being done accurately or false statements. And he stated at that time there were too many, and he couldn't articulate it, and he needed time, which I would absolutely agree with. If you are presented with something, sometimes we need extra time to get those thoughts together. I asked if he could bring to the board the next meeting all of the concerns and the inaccuracies of the meeting minutes, and his response was, I hope so. At that next meeting, when I asked for those meeting minutes and if he could articulate the, the inaccuracies of those meeting minutes, he could not and refused to answer me. This has happened multiple times, more than half of the times with the meeting minutes. The problem is, if you can't answer the inaccuracies, if you can't articulate what is wrong with it and why you're not voting, it leaves up to everyone else watching imagination. And the innuendo is that there are things that are nefarious, that are, are happening behind the scenes, is left open for interpretation, and that is a problem. You continue to do the same thing. You continue to abstain from voting and say that you're right, and you continue to not let anybody know why you're not doing this, and that leaves it open for interpretation, and it's a problem.
People speaking, please remember to speak to the moderator, not to anyone else in the room.
Christina Fantonas, 36 Dalton Road. I just wanted to say, after listening to everybody, how disgusted I am how they insulted Tom. We voted Tom in for a reason. If nobody likes the job he's doing, and when he comes up to vote, they cannot vote for him. Vote for someone else. As far as these positions for towns, this isn't the big city. This is not how it works here in small towns. These positions are for everyday people. There is training offered if needed. So for someone to come up here and say that we need someone with more experience or some kind of background, that's not how this works. This is locals, everyday people who want to run, who care about their town. To come up here and degrade him like they did is disgusting. And I think everyone should vote no on this. We voted him in. We want him on the select board. Bottom line. This witch hunt needs to stop. I have witnessed the exact opposite at town meetings. More people should attend them and see, because the hostile environment is not coming from Tom Dubriel. I've seen it come from the clerk and other select board members towards him. I have seen, he's in a hostile environment, if anything. He is not causing the hostile environment. The people around him are. And I couldn't believe the disrespect towards him when I attended meetings. People should attend them more, and we do have videos, because people record them, all the meetings. And if they seen even half of them, they would be disgusted as well. I think this witch hunt needs to end, and we need to vote no.
Kathleen Cump, 801 Dalton. I'd like to ask the moderator to call for a vote, if everybody has spoken. Okay?
So this is the last person in line before we call for that vote?
This meeting has been brought up to try to get Tom out of office, so he cannot continue to negotiate with Casella. They want to kick this can down the road. They do not want to get anything done. And it's, it's time that we stop this. The town voted Tom in for a reason. The town voted Eric in for a reason. They want things done. They're tired of getting things kicked down the road and nothing done.
All right, we've had a motion to move the vote. I see no one else wants to discuss, so we don't really need to take a vote on that. I have received a petition from five voters present, same voters as last time, that the Article 2 be taken by secret written ballot in accordance with state law. So if you would now, using the same super-organized approach that we had last time, file yourselves to the supervisors of the checklist, pick up the card, and deposit the half of the card that you wish to vote into the ballot box. Selectman Tom Dubriel, the town has lost confidence in his ability to perform in his role as a Dalton selectman for reasons regarding some or all of the following. Selectman Tom Dubriel is routinely unprepared to comprehend, discuss, or vote on the town's business at select board meetings. When selectman Tom Dubriel has accepted responsibility to follow up or take action on town business, Dubriel routinely fails to deliver a result. Selectman Tom Dubriel risks significant legal expenses to the town by refusing to respond and/or delaying response to legal right-to-know requests. Selectman Tom Dubriel routinely abstains from voting on motions before the select board. Selectman Tom Dubriel championed the replacement of the town's legal firm with a new legal firm that quickly exceeded the town's annual budget for legal expenses addressing his issues. So with that, we can start exchanging votes. Thank you. The ballot box is closed. We'll begin counting. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 2 passes. Yeses are 93, and the nos are 84. And with that, this meeting... And with that, this meeting... Just making sure nobody's saying anything. With that, that concludes the special town meeting. We'll see you again on March 11th for the regular town meeting. Please drive carefully.